The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I will throw it over to Commissioner Lerner to start the meeting.
Morning, everybody. Welcome. Okay. Do you want to introduce yourself, if you can, the American Sign Language interpreter?
Hi, my name is Tiana, and my team today is Tiffany Jones and the two of us are the ASL interpreters for today.
Thank you. We also have a transcriptionist who will be transcribing every meeting. Please speak slowly so we have a clear...
Hi, my name is Erica Newberg. I'm the chairwoman, and I live in Chandler, not too far from here.
Good morning again. My name is Shereen Lerner, and I am a representative from Maricopa County.
Good morning. My name is Doug York. I'm the representative from Maricopa County for the Republican Party.
And we have Commissioner Meal.
I'm David Meal, and I'm a representative from Pima County.
And Commissioner Watchman, vice chair.
Good morning. I'm Derek Watchman, the vice chairman of the commission, and I come to the commission from Apache County. And I'm the Democratic appointee. Good morning, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens may only speak when recognized by the chair or the presiding officer of the meeting if the chair is absent or otherwise has delegated hearing administration authority. In compliance with Arizona's open meeting law, speakers should confine their statements to the issue on the posted agenda, which is before the commission. Speakers are also required -- requested to limit their comments to approximately two minutes. Additionally, speakers are required to follow proper decorum. Speakers must use appropriate language. Foul and/or abusive language will not be tolerated. Any speaker failing to follow proper decorum or any other guidelines may be asked to leave. Any breach of the peace or disruption of a commissioned public hearing may be the cause of report to law enforcement. This is a nonpartisan meeting. Please do not distribute political material in the meeting room. Opposing viewpoints may be expressed by the citizens present. As a courtesy, citizens are reminded to address their comments to the chair and the commission and not to the audience present. Please show respect for all speakers and avoid personal comments. If you have already spoken at a previous meeting or someone has expressed the same sentiment that you want to, you may say so, and your comments will be recorded into the record. You do not need to speak again in order for your comments to be given more weight. Remember, the commission must hear all sides of an issue in order to make an informed decision. And at this time, we'll have staff announce the first name.
Good morning. My name is Marie Chapel. I'm one of the community outreach coordinators. And between Florence and here in Phoenix, we have about 50 speakers. So we'll start with the first 10 in Phoenix, and I'll call your name out in order. The first speaker will be Rich Feeley, followed by Tempest Shires, followed by Sarah Fanning, and then Kevin N. Brown, then Margaret Colley, Joshua Wells, Paul Wyke. Forgive me if I pronounce this wrong, Michael Olivares, Charmaine Ruth Rudel Ross, and Nancy Ordowski.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rich Feeley, and I've been a Chandler resident since 2011. My remarks will focus on Legislative District 13. The IRC has the opportunity to create a competitive district in Chandler while maintaining communities of interest throughout the East Valley. Submitted map LDF 034 achieves that outcome by modifying the current 10.0 map to make LD 12, 13, and 14 more compact, contiguous, and competitive. Eliminating the panhandle of the proposed LD 12 and extending LD 13 northward to the Western Canal border maintains the downtown Chandler community of interest and combines the Latino precincts in North Chandler into Legislative District 13. Retirement communities of interest in Sunlakes and Owatuki can be combined into LD 12, helping balance populations across Chandler and Gilbert while keeping the Kyrene School District together. Moving eastern LD 13 precincts into LD 14 allows the number of districts in Gilbert to reduce from five to two and also reduces the number of Chandler legislative districts from three to two. Revising LD 13 based on map LDF 034 or LD 0047 encompasses these Chandler communities of interest, allows the IRC to create a truly competitive district in the East Valley while keeping communities of interest united across Owatuki, Chandler, and Gilbert. Thank you for your consideration of this request, and I yield the balance of my time.
Hello, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Tempest Shires. For the 12 years, I've lived in the southwest of Chandler, below the 202 and slightly north of the Sunlakes gated communities. My children attended, and I volunteered in schools in the Chandler Unified School District. I currently live in one of the few districts in Arizona that is so competitive that I have a Republican and a Democrat as my two House representatives. I'm also lucky enough to live in a district that, because of its competitiveness, has a higher-than-average voter turnout. Unfortunately, the LD draft map makes my area, the proposed District 13, far less competitive. And I'm very worried that this will lead to a decreasing voters over the next decade, as some people will wonder why their votes even matter. Although District 13 looks good on paper, being nice and compact, to me, it makes no sense why the head of Chandler, its northern part, has been chopped off from the main body of Chandler and instead added to the vast expanse of District 12's panhandle. This boundary also chops off the more heavily Latino areas of Chandler in two. It would make more sense to me if these were added back to District 13, as the people in this area are part of the city of Chandler and can vote in the city council elections. This is not the same of my neighbors to the south, the Sunlakes retiree community. They make up their own town, and though the residents can vote in the Maricopa County elections, they can't vote in the Chandler City Council elections because they're not part of Chandler. I urge the commissioners to make District 13 as competitive as it currently is for my area by adding the head of Chandler back to its body and to balance the population, removing Sunlakes retiree communities into District 12, which already includes the very similar Owatuki foothills. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm going to agree with a lot of what the people before me said, but my name is Sarah Fanning, and I live in Chandler. I ask that you revisit the East Valley maps and try and keep the cities together as much as possible. I understand that Chandler cannot be kept whole. However, it has now been split into three. My family has always lived in Chandler. My husband works in Chandler, and my children attend Chandler Unified Schools. So right now, the way the new districts have been redrawn, my son's school in the northern part of Chandler and my daughter's school in the southern part of Chandler will no longer be in the same LD, even though they're in the same school district. This doesn't make sense. I suggest that the proposed panhandle in LD 12 be removed and instead extend LD 13 northward as submitted in map LDF 034. To balance, you could consider removing the eastern and northern parts of the LD 13 that extend out into Gilbert, and that would maintain the cities and keep them whole. It would also help maintain the Chandler and Sunfin Valley community of interest, combining the five Latino precincts and make LD 13 more representative of the city of Chandler. Thanks for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Kevin Brown. I've lived in Tempe for the last 30 years and lived in Arizona my entire life, except for my military service. I do volunteer work and am active in my neighborhood association. Tempe is only about 200,000 people and shouldn't be divided up into four different legislative districts. I live close to ASU and consider my area of interests North Tempe, South Scottsdale, East Mesa, and East-South Phoenix. That area, not Scottsdale, north of Thomas Road, is more in keeping with Tempe. Keep our cities together. Please split them less. Divide Tempe into two: one urban where I live and one suburban south of my place of residence. And move the Honda District to District 9 and the Mesa School District, where most of the kids in that district go to school. Also, keep Scottsdale in just two or three districts, not four as you have it now. Make districts more competitive. Make districts as competitive as possible so we get better representation and not just whatever person gets through the primary. We need competitive districts so we get representatives that actually represent us. Thank you for your time and consideration and the hard work you've done. Kevin, thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am Margaret Colley from Tempe, Arizona, where I have lived for 26 years and have built my community there. Over these years, I have been involved in church activities and city committees, as well as serving eight years on the Tempe Elementary School Board. I live in the current Legislative District 26 and Congressional District 9, which in your latest drafts are Legislative District 8, Congressional District 9, or 4, excuse me. As a student of government with a PhD in public administration, I am proud that Arizona has an independent redistricting commission. I hope that the IRC final product will meet the six constitutionally defined criteria voted into law by its citizens in 2000. I desire that Arizona's IRC be the model for the rest of the country in defining fair and competitive electoral units. I advocate that the commission avoid appearance of any political gerrymandering. I ask the commission to look closely at the criticism it's currently receiving for drawing an area in Tucson and one in Coconino County that apparently seemed to be favoring one party over the other. I also hope that the commission is listening to our Native Americans and our Hispanic/Latino groups and listening to their community of interest and will respect them in drawing the new maps. For my community of interest, Tempe, I'm concerned about how the latest draft splinters the city of Tempe and splinters Tempe Elementary School District. I learned during my years on the school board how closely Tempe and the school district work together. These are strong, active communities that should be whole and together. A specific question I want to highlight is why is a section of North Scottsdale part of LD 8? I think Mr. Brown just mentioned that as well. What is the common community of interest there? Another concern is the appearance of separating retiree communities rather than including them as a specific community of interest. The commission needs to revisit how they have treated these retired communities in their latest maps. Thank you.
Hello, Chair, members of the commission. My name is Joshua Wells. I live on the intersection of 31st Avenue and Encanto Boulevard. Yep, of course. Can you hear me better now? Yep, thank you. My name is Joshua Wells. I live on the corner of 31st Avenue and Encanto. I live right now in a majority Latino neighborhood, have lived there for about three to four years now. First came to Arizona back in 2010. My family has experienced a lot of challenges looking for resources for our family. Even in terms of housing, it's been extremely difficult. When I first came down to Arizona, lived with my in-laws for about a year because the cost of housing was so expensive. And right now, today, I'm asking the commission to create more Latino-majority districts in terms of the state legislative districts. Right now, I believe the maps have four of those. Looking at the area in the West Valley, there's an opportunity, especially in those rural areas, to create another Latino-majority district. This is extremely important to make sure that my family and many families like ours have proper representation in the state legislature. This could make dramatic changes, large changes, that would allow many families like mine to become more involved, have resources that are crucial for us, and really contribute the most to the fabric here in Arizona. And that's all we want to do. We want to contribute. We want to be a part of the state. We want to make our mark here and have a chance to really live out the American dream. So I really appreciate your time today, and please create another majority Latino district. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Paul Wyke. I grew up in Arizona, and I've lived in the East Valley for 33 1/3 years, actually, my LP year. I've been active in East Valley organizations for just as long. And I'm here today because our legislative boundaries in the East Valley can and should do a better job at reflecting our cities' identities and our populations. I testified in August about Kyrene School District, and you have made sure that the district stays largely together, and I appreciate that, of course. However, I'm mystified by the sudden appearance of a large, non- contiguous stretch going through a strip of Chandler and Gilbert, the panhandle, as somebody referred to it, tentacle, arm, however we want to refer to it. It needlessly splinters those cities. It breaks up other school districts, not Kyrene, but it breaks up other school districts needlessly, and it divides both Latino and Asian-American communities of interest. It also makes the proposed LD 12 a district that stretches some 30 miles from east to west. And for an urban district, I just don't see the sense in that. Obviously, rural districts are different, but this is an urban and suburban district. There are much more sensible ways to redistrict the East Valley in a way that keeps cities and communities of interest less divided, and it also would make them more competitive. I hope that you will be open to making the necessary changes, and I thank you all so much. It's good to see you in person, and thank you so much for all your volunteerism, all your time, and the effort that you're putting into this. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Hello. Thank you all for giving me an opportunity to speak today. I currently live in Congressional District 1, also Legislative District 1. I do want to make a case for there being a fifth Latino-majority-minority community. As you know, many have stated, the panhandle there just above Chandler doesn't really seem to make a whole lot of sense. And I do think that if that was drawn in a more correct manner, it would allow for more proper representation for the Latino community, given the fact that I also feel that there was an undercount when it came to the census last year for reasons I believe that we all know here. I do also want to stress competitiveness in these districts. I feel that when there is competitiveness, as a registered independent, I do feel that both parties make a greater effort to reach out to everybody and not just assume that they're going to win because there is a majority of their constituents there. And so again, I just want to emphasize a fifth majority-minority Latino district as well as more competitiveness as well. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Charmaine Ross, and I live in Rio Verde. I moved here three years ago. I spend all of my time in Rio Verde, Fountain Hills, and Scottsdale. I do not ever go to Desert Ridge or Deer Valley and never get far as the 17. So I'm concerned that the current borders are stretched so far that it's not representative of my community. The western boundary of Scottsdale is, right now, really should be Scottsdale Road. To go beyond that is an entirely different community. Our communities are western and suburban, whereas the other ones are more urban. It's an entirely different type of people, things that we're interested in, things that we do. These areas are not the same, and the communities of interest are different, and we should all be in the same district. The other concern I would like to express to you is I live in Rio Verde, and it took me an hour to get here. And the next meeting I go to is going to be an hour. And I would like to suggest that you schedule a meeting in the East Valley that's more convenient for people of my community of interest to come and express their concerns about maintaining our community of interest. So thank you very much, and I look forward to scheduling meetings for us.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Ordowski, and I've been a resident of Arizona since 1998. District 3 is one of my concerns. There is no community of interest between Anthem, Desert Ridge, Scottsdale, and Fountain Hills. I live in Fountain Hills, and I-17 and Anthem is 35 miles away. And the only time I'm driving by that is should I be going up to Sedona with my family members that are here to visit. The western border of 3, I encourage and suggest that it be Scottsdale Road and south to at least Indian Bend. I know that we have to have compromises and we have to make splits in some of our decisions, but these are the areas where we go to school, our medical treatments, our shopping for clothing and groceries, and households, and all of those things. We also need to be watching what District 2 and 4 are doing, and both of those need to be moved north. That's their communities of interest in the areas where they have been in the recent future, or past. Congressional District 1 is also of concern, and I encourage you to look at those maps and move Phoenix out of our community of interest. It's a totally different community of younger people, people that are living and working in the Phoenix area. And then I ask to please schedule a meeting for the East Valley. Maricopa is the largest county in the state and has the largest population, and it appears that we need to have more meetings so that we can express our concerns. And the East Valley, both north and south, are of that point. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we're going to send it over to Florence.
Good afternoon, Madam ProTem Chair, Shereen Lerner, and members of the commission and listening audience. With me here in Florence, I have our executive assistant Valerie Newman, and my name is Michelle Crank. I'm the Public Information Officer for the Independent Redistricting Commission. Our first five speakers, and if we can have our speakers line up according to how I call you out on this side. The first speaker is Ruth Denny. Second, Nola Perkins. Brenda Gifford. Anthony Ireland. Matthew Nelson. And the next five speakers after that, Robert Allen, Mary Rodriguez, Sheri Mitchell, Jess Bryant, Nancy Hawkins. Before we get started with our speakers, I'd like our Spanish interpreter to introduce herself.
My name is Ruth Denny. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am a citizen of Pinal County, Gold Canyon in particular. I only have a couple of things I want to talk about. I'm still trying to understand the entire remapping thing. There's two things I want to hit on. One is, it appears that Gold Canyon is going to be put into the new District 7. And if you were looking at the two of the constitutional requirements for remapping, one of them is called compactness. And moving into District 7, for those of us in Pinal County, will put us in an enormously, enormously district. I don't see how there's anything compact about it. So I'd like you to reconsider that. The big concern I have is how will we get good representation if our legislator is on the road all the time? The second item I wanted to talk about is communities of interest. Gold Canyon is attached to Apache Junction. We have a lot of things in common between the two of us. We don't have anything in common with Flagstaff or some of the other areas, but the two communities have parks and recreation and many things that I think we want to keep intact. So the new change would put a dividing line between us and Apache Junction. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nola Perkins. I am retired and have, since the late '90s, lived in Apache Junction, which, at this point in time in my life, is the center of my universe. I spoke at a previous hearing encouraging the commissioners to respect communities of interest. They were very courteous, and I thought they heard and understood what I was saying. However, it appears that I was mistaken. The communities of interest is defined as, and I quote, "a group of people in geographical areas, such as a specific region or neighborhood, who have common political, social, or economic interests," end quote. The size, geography, and diversity of the currently proposed District 7 certainly does not meet this criteria and violates the constitutional requirement of communities of interest. Compactness refers to the general principle that the constituents within a district should live as near one another as practicable. This is obviously not the case in District 7, which, as now mapped, covers approximately 200 miles north and south and 200 miles east and west. Flagstaff and Sedona are way too far north and completely violate the compactness criteria. Competitiveness requires that the state legislative and congressional district lines be drawn to account for political boundaries like counties, cities, and towns, not to favor one political party, individual, or constituency over another. Splitting Apache Junction, as it appears to be what has become known as gerrymandering, that term was used frequently after the last redistricting, and I am certainly hoping it is not a term that will be used after this redistricting is finalized. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brenda Gifford. I have attended in person three of these meetings and I have appreciated the degree of respect that we felt at each meeting when we spoke. The thing that is concerning me at this point, as I look at the maps dated October 28th, is the apparent constitutional violation of the compactness. I'm looking at Legislative District seven that runs about 200 miles north to south and 200 east and west. We, I can't imagine representing that district and having to cover that amount of geographical space when someone in Phoenix that represents a district would be able to navigate a 10-mile distance. This is so egregious. There's no way that Flagstaff and Sedona have anything to do with us as far as communities of interest. So I don't understand why you would violate both communities of interest and compactness in the way this map is drawn. I appreciate your time and opportunity to speak.
Good morning. My name is Tony Ireland. I'm from Apache Junction. And several months ago, I was at the meeting here in Florence and I advise the Commissioners to, to not repeat the mistakes of the past. I was referring to, to the current Congressional District number one and its size. At the time, it went from four corners all the way down close to Tucson. But we have the same thing now with Congressional District two and also with Legislative District number seven. The sheer size of it makes it unmanageable. So I just wanted to express my concerns that it's not a viable district as far as I'm concerned and I will yield back the balance of my time. Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Matthew Nelson. I live at Saddlebrook Ranch in Oracle, Arizona. I have seen many of the IRC meetings and have been, for the most part, pretty impressed by the meetings. However, I've got some concerns what has happened recently. The IRC, I do not believe, are making decisions on maps that are geographically compact and contiguous, is practical, and not many of the districts are fair and competitive. Need to make maps fair and competitive so that people, when they are voting, will vote because the races will be close. Also, political party registration and voting registration cannot be used to draw district lines by the Arizona law. Arizona law prohibits that, yet on the night before the final day, the Commission voted on a new map. There was a map that was drawn up by the, by clearly people from the, from another part, from a party and they gerrymandered the district that I live in to include Morana. And then also CD six, where I live, was also gerrymandered. So I believe that the Commission, when they make their final maps, should take a look at this and the concerns that people have been bringing up and make the maps fair. The IRC is, is something that people in the country wish that they had and we got to continue to work at it. It's relatively new. This is only the third time that we're using it and we can't go back to gerrymandering. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bob Allen. I live in Saddlebrook. I've lived there since 2013. I'm a retired broadcast executive who escaped the state of California. I would like to talk for a minute here about Legislative District 17, which now includes Saddlebrook and Saddlebrook Ranch. These are both retirement communities and if you take a quick look at the map, you'll see that the, the current approved map has been gerrymandered to include those two in a new District 17. In addition to that, there is no geographical connection between Saddlebrook, Saddlebrook Ranch, and Morana and Oral Valley. In fact, they are separated by a range of mountains. So I believe this violates the law. In addition, District six, which is the district that we are now being moved into from District one, in the past, we have been, we represented a district that included large parts of Indian country. And now those parts are completely gone. We were a rural district and now with an incredibly gerrymandered map, which includes an arm that goes all the way up to Maricopa County, we're now part of a very, very urban area. So I believe that that needs to be looked at again. Thank you very much.
My name is Mary Rodriguez. I'm a resident of Casa Grande. Thank you, Madam Commissioners. Thank you for holding these hearings. I've resided in Casa Grande for the last 15 years and I am involved in various volunteer and civic activities. I'm in Arizona since 1977. I retired last year and I have worked, and my husband has worked for mining companies. So we've lived in a lot of the little mining towns around the state. Casa Grande, Eloy, and Arizona City are a contiguous and compact community and they've been split up in this new CD six. That needs to be relooked at. Maricopa, which is in Pinal County, our whole county is a area, a community of interest and that's been carved out. So this new CD six needs to be relooked at. They've reached all the way over to the eastern part of the state and grabbed Greenlee County, which is a big mining district and probably is better served being with the other mining communities. Casa Grande is an agricultural, Pinal County is agricultural, Graham County is too, so those make sense. And it's just, it needs to be read at. So thank you for allowing me to testify today.
Hi, my name is Sheri Mitchell. I live and work in Arizona City. I attend church in Arizona City. I shop in Casa Grande, go to the doctors in Casa Grande, auto repair, mechanics, everything, everything we do is in Casa Grande. And, and we need, our, our, we don't, I don't have children in school, but I know many homeschool children that participate in work groups, study groups in Casa Grande. And the high school for Arizona City is in Casa Grande. We need to be made a part of Casa Grande, period. We do not visit Tucson or, or south to the border. We are, we are part of Casa Grande and that's our contiguous and community, community designation. Thank you.
Hi, hello, my name is Jess Bryant. So I'm from rural Arizona. I come to you to speak about the five eastern counties, five plus eastern counties. We, we wish to have our rural voice restored for our legislative districts, solely rural and undivided, the five eastern counties. We have seven cities and towns now that have adopted resolutions to this effect. Those are Republicans and Democrats and Independents and whites, Hispanics, and men and women. Our politics are rural. They are not metro. I actually echo much of what's been said here today, was I agree from the opposite end of the coin. So please, please give a voice to us here in rural Arizona. Hopefully you will have the opportunity to hear from us some more. Do not link us to urban, metro, suburban areas. I've heard a lot of these areas that are suburban being called rural and I would disagree with that. We are rural, are small communities across eastern Arizona, mining, farming, ranching, timber, et cetera. Please, please hear our voice and please restore our voice to the legislature without combining us again with any metropolitan or urban areas. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Hawkins. I am a native Arizonan. I've lived in Casa Grande for 29 years. I thank you for having these meetings. It's the second one that I've been able to attend. Although you have made great strides, I believe, in the legislative district that I'm going to be in, which is 16, you were, you were able to connect some of the communities of interest in that one from the original maps. I am concerned over the congressional districts because you have literally carved out from Casa Grande and from CD seven or six and made Arizona City and Eloy a CD seven. I live in Casa Grande, across the street from the city of Eloy, and my office is in Arizona City. Those three communities literally border each other on three sides. You walk across the street on any one of them and you're in the next city. They are an integral part to each other. I think it is absolutely, it makes no sense to have a carve out there of that small area and not have it be part of Congressional District six. In CD seven, it is literally probably 80 miles away from the nearest community. We have nothing in common with any of the communities that you've connected us with, nor is it compact or contiguous. I am also concerned that Pinal County has more CDs in it now than it did when we started. Pinal County is one county, one community of interest for a large part. We extended part of us over into the mining communities. It's my understanding the mining communities wanted to be represented more or less together. And then you have taken the city of Maricopa and put that into another congressional district. We are connected together. We all work together. We shop together. We do things together in Pinal County. So I would hope that you would do a better job of maybe connecting and putting Pinal County back whole. Thank you.
We will now go back to Phoenix.
Thank you. I will call the next five speakers and if you could line up as I call your name, it would be appreciated. Also, please remember it's a two-minute time limit. If you need guidance for your speaking, the time clock is over there. First is Brian Shomlawful. Sandy Barlett. Carol Cherry is number three. Karen Garrett is number four. And Stephen Steele is the fifth speaker.
My comments are in reference to legislative districts in the East Valley. My name is Brian Shomlawful. I have been a lifelong resident of the East Valley. I went to school at some time in the Kyrene School District. I went to school in the Tempe Union School District. I've had many jobs across the East Valley. I've worked in many locations across the East Valley. And I think that the current draft maps right now do a poor job at reflecting communities of interest in the East Valley. For instance, the city of Gilbert has a population of 267,000 and yet despite it having enough population to have its own legislative district, the city is split in five parts. I think the voices, the community of interest of Gilbert is completely diluted in the current draft maps. The city of Chandler, despite it having a population of 275,000 people, is split across three legislative districts. The city of Mesa, which has a population of 504,000 people, is split across four legislative districts. And even though the city of Mesa is the second largest city in the East, in the state of Arizona, there's not, there's no legislative district that's entirely contained within the city of Mesa. The city of Apache Junction is split two ways. The city of Queen Creek is split two ways despite the fact that the cities are small enough to be contained within their own, or to be contained within a single legislative district. I think that the, the current maps in the East Valley do a poor job at reflecting municipal boundaries within the East Valley. I think that ideally the Commission should try to minimize city splits to two districts and if possible, keep cities within a single district to the best extent that they can. I yield my time. Thanks.
Good morning. My name is Sandy Bartlett and I live in Gilbert. I'd like to start out first by saying we would appreciate having a hearing for the East Valley. There's none scheduled yet, so we're hoping that you will do that. I live in the northwest part of Gilbert and have lived there for 15 years. Our area is the heart and soul of Gilbert. Downtown area is filled with new shops and restaurants that we visit often and that is where the Gilbert Farmers Market is and where the Town Council makes our laws. However, your maps removed, well, first you split Gilbert into five districts. Your map removes two blocks in Gilbert and puts them into downtown Mesa, which is LD9. Then you remove three more blocks below that and you put them into an area that reaches west all the way to I-10, Awatuki. We, I do not consider those communities of interest and that's one of the top issues that the U.S. Constitution sets forth for you. There's no good reason that the northern border of Gilbert is not baseline and the western border of Gilbert is Arizona Avenue because that is the natural city boundaries. And so I would request that you look at stretching those boundaries out. As for the congressional district, I ask that you keep all of Gilbert together with Queen Creek and Mesa. District five should follow also the county line and should not go into Pinal County. Your current maps, to me, make absolutely no sense with the district Gilbert being split into five and would consider communities of interest or fairness and I ask that you keep Gilbert whole. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Carol Cherry and I live in the infamous Gilbert Panhandle. The Arizona Constitution directs the IRC to follow six criteria to create district maps. The proposed map for Gilbert does not follow at least three of those criteria. Number one, district should be compact. The North Gilbert map looks like a, oh, I really wish I could see that map of my panhandle. Looks like a Jenga puzzle. It's five different colors. We already know that one Jenga piece goes from Val Vista all the way past through Chandler through Awatuki. This, that is the opposite of compact and definitely has many communities with vastly different interests. Number two, district boundaries should respect communities of interest. Splitting Gilbert five ways definitely splits up our communities of interest in five different parts. Most concerning is that our heritage district on Gilbert Road is one of the splintered-off Jenga pieces. This is the historic and cultural center of Gilbert. Our Gilbert Water Tower is a landmark that's been there since 1927. This area should absolutely be in a Gilbert district. City and town boundaries, the gentleman before me spoke to that. Gilbert's half the size of Mesa. We're split in five and Mesa's only two big ones. Gilbert is small and I respectfully ask that you just divide us into two districts instead of five, similar to Mesa. Regarding Congressional District five, I would urge the Commission to keep our community of Gilbert in one district. And lastly, I would like to ask you to hold a hearing in the East Valley because there are a lot of us that drove a long ways today and a lot of people that couldn't drive that far. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak.
Hi, my name is Karen Garrett. I live, have lived in North Phoenix and Scottsdale for 41 years. I have lived near the corner of Pinnacle Peak and Pima for 26 of those years. I would like to speak of communities of interest. I always drive south on Pima and cross the 101 to shop, eat out, and go to church along the 101 corridor. Also, the school district of Scottsdale is split where my children, before they all left my home, used to go to school and many of my friends still are involved in this Scottsdale school district. As far as competitiveness, the districts of three and eight are like a 40-point difference and that makes that very disruptive. and that makes that very disruptive and very not following the rules. The way the LD District 3 is currently drawn, it spans approximately 36 miles east and west from Fountain Hills to Lake Pleasant. I’ve heard a group of women talking at one of these meetings that they have never been to Fountain Hills. And similarly, where I live, in Lake Pleasant, the only couple of times I’ve been there is to go to the shooting range of Ben Avery. As far as the CDs, I would like to say that in compact Maricopa County, the current map shows a large expansive district, CD1, spanning from urban Central Phoenix to suburban cities of North Scottsdale and North Phoenix to the rural areas of Anthem and New River. I propose that we remove urban Central Phoenix. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Steele. I’m from Gilbert, Arizona. This is my second appearance before the committee, but the first with any proposed mapping. Gilbert is the sixth-largest city in the state of Arizona, and it’s a thriving community comprised of multiple businesses, industries. Just looking at your proposed mapping right now, you’ve divided it into five different districts. I don’t believe that that is concise or compact, nor does it serve the businesses and the people of the city of Gilbert. I believe that the legislative districts need to be compact and need to be focused on serving the people and the industries that they encompass. At the very most, I think Gilbert should not be divided into more than two districts. I think the best place to make that division would be Germain Road. Everything south of Germain Road could be combined with Chandler for a district on the south side. Everything north of Germain Road could be a standalone district for the city, the industry, and the citizens of Gilbert, Arizona. In terms of the congressional districts, when it comes to commonalities, it seems to make more sense to me that we combine Gilbert and Mesa. The western boundary of this district could be comprised of either Stapley Drive and Cooper Road, or possibly even move another mile to the west and make that boundary Arizona and Country Club Drive. The city limits of Mesa would be the boundary on the north. The East Hunt Highway would be the boundary on the south, and they would extend all the way to the Maricopa County line for that congressional district. I would like to thank you for your time and consideration, and I would also like to reiterate my desire for a meeting in the East Valley to make it a little more easy for people in Apache Junction, for West Mesa, East Gilbert, all of the other areas out there to attend these meetings, because I think you would have a very good turnout. Thank you.
I just would like to make a comment. First of all, thank you all. You’re giving very specific comments. If you do have very specific recommendations, we do advise you to try to submit a map or submit those in writing in some way as well. We are, of course, taking notes, and we are transcribing it, but some of you have referenced some maps that have been submitted, so we encourage you to continue or to consider submitting some of those maps, as some of you have already done, and we’d like to see some more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you can actually turn those into our staff if you have them already drawn. We’ll take paper copies of those today. You can always send in paper copies, and then you can also send in using our mapping program. So we have lots of options for you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lerner. We will do five more speakers in Phoenix before turning it back to Florence. So the next five in order are Earl Schaefer, then number two will be Bruce Fixman, number three will be Trow Robb, number four will be Karen Lanborn, and then number five will be Sumiya Abdul Gadir. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Earl Schaefer. I live in Gilbert in a community called The Islands. I am retired, and I’m a Marine veteran. After looking at the proposed legislative district, the city of Gilbert is cut up into five districts. This is an impractical and an unacceptable division of the sixth-largest city in Arizona. Further, this division of representation of Gilbert citizens and their industries does not equitably serve the needs of either the citizens or the industry. I feel Gilbert should be divided into two legislative districts, and I will submit the new maps and the areas, but I’ll read the borders that I have here. It makes a lot more sense to divide Gilbert at Germain Road. This would unite South Gilbert with Chandler. These two areas have more in common, and this combination would benefit voters in both areas. North Germain Road would be second district in Gilbert. This would be a standalone district for the voters, citizens, and industry north of Germain Road. In terms of congressional districts, when it comes to commonality, it makes more sense to combine areas of Gilbert and Mesa. This could be done by proposing the western boundary lines to Arizona Ave. The east boundary would be set at the Maricopa Line. The north boundary line would be the Mesa city limit, and the south boundary line would be the line running parallel to East Hunt Highway from the intersection of South Cooper and East Hunt Highway, running parallel to East Hunt Highway, ending at the Maricopa Line. I, too, would like to see a hearing held for the East Valley. I don’t know why it was canceled. It should be on, and I’d like to see that started, because there’s a lot of people out there that would like to talk. I’d like to thank you all for my considerations and recommendations, and thank you again for your time.
Hello, IRC. Thank you for your time and consideration. My name is Bruce Fixman. I’ve been an East Valley resident for 25 years, where I also operate my business. My comments are very similar to a group of many of the folks here today, so I’ll keep my comments brief. The panhandle that we’ve all been talking about, it does hurt several communities of interest, especially the Latino and the Asian-American communities, so I do propose that you reexamine that and remove the panhandle that you have in LD 12. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Tracy Robb. I live in northwest Gilbert. I moved there 21 years ago. I raised my children there. I’ve served on the school board in the Gilbert School District. My kids graduated from the Gilbert School Districts with honors and very involved in track and golf. My kids even attended Chandler-Gilbert Community College. We attend church in Gilbert, and I have a special needs daughter who’s involved in sped programs in Gilbert, both through the school district and through the Parks and Recs Department. We love our downtown. We love our historical district. Gilbert’s very proud of itself. We have a lot of reason to be. I’m very extremely unhappy with the layout that’s proposed for redistricting the redistricting map. Gilbert’s divided, as you know, into five areas. The corridor is killing us all. We just really don’t understand that at all. The interest of our community is not being considered. We really don’t even know what was considered here. No part of Gilbert should be attached to Mesa or Awatuki. Gilbert really should have its own legislative district, but I do agree with some of the proposals I’ve heard, where you cut it off from, like, south of Germain Road. That would actually work. Where I live, in the northwest part of Gilbert, which right now is Legislative 17, you want to put us now with Legislative 9, which breaks us completely off into Mesa. We also want to stay part of Congressional District 5, and the way it’s proposed as of now, you have us in Congressional District 4, again, with Mesa. As you’ve heard multiple times today, I have a lot of friends and family and neighbors that want to do their own meeting for East Valley with you guys. We’re not scary, and we would be kind, but we really do need to hear it, and we’d love it to be in person. I’d bring brownies if you want. Thank you for your time. It’s really important to us that you really consider the things that we’re asking for.
And before the next speaker, if we can just have the Spanish interpreter come up and introduce herself. We want to remind everybody that we have a Spanish interpreter here.
I’m the Spanish interpreter. My name is Mary. I’m last name Isputo. There is a need for an interpreter. If you know someone, please come and find me. I’ll be in the back of the room. Buenos dias. Me llamo Miguel Isputo. Soy la intérprete del día de hoy. Si alguien necesita mi asistencia, por favor, venga y tome mi atención o conozca del que necesite utilizarla. Voy a estar al fondo del cuarto. Gracias.
Hello. I am Karen Lanborn. I am a resident of Chandler. I live out by Chandler Heights. I recently moved and have lived there 14 years previously, 25 years as a public school teacher, and then substituting in the Gilbert School District. I wholeheartedly support the proposed LD 13, seven-point-all version of the map that you have up on the screen, the green one, with the railroad on the northern boundary, the green field on the eastern, the Hunt Highway and Old Price Road. I support it because, with the exception of the correction that we’ve had, a problem because you had split our legislative district into Chandler, Congressional District 5, and then you cross the street and you’re in Congressional District 9, which, as I tried to understand the issues to vote and be a participating, active citizen, they’re so different, and it boggled my mind. I couldn’t do it. It’s good that you have consolidated us into one congressional district, 5. Keep it up. This is also a very successful map because it integrates Intel, which is expanding a big industrial complex, which we love having, a retirement community, Sun Lakes, regular people with families that are all ages, and is contiguous with the Chandler Unified School District boundaries. We all work together. We’re not divided, and we love it. And with this new map, we will continue to be supportive, participating Arizonans. Thank you so much.
And our fifth speaker was Sumiya Abdul Gadir. Is she here? Sumiya? Okay. That concludes our five speakers in here, and we will turn it back to Florence.
Our next eight speakers, Mark Proz, Steve Hetzler, Jerry Walker, Arthur Borin, Phyllis Pettyjohn, Patricia Peterson, David Pelens, I’m sorry if I pronounce your name wrong, Pelensky, Pelengis, and Kathleen Norwalk.
Good morning. Mark Proz. I’m from Saddlebrook Ranch. To the board and your staff, I want to thank you for all the hard work in drawing up the proposed districts. Thank you for, I spoke in August and requested that Saddlebrook Ranch be made part of the community to the south of us, which is actually includes Saddlebrook, Catalina, Oral Valley, Marina, Catalina, Casa Adoba, and Catalina Foothills. And you did that, so thank you very much. I’m very satisfied, and I speak for a lot of people up in Saddlebrook, that CD 6 and Legislative District 17 looks like you hit the target. Thank you.
Hi. I’m Steve Hetzler. Lived most of my life in Arizona before moving to Gold Canyon early last year. When I spoke at last week’s Virtual Town Hall, I expressed my concerns about my community being placed in a far-flung LD 7, but I’m equally concerned about being placed in equally far-flung CD 2. When I listened to most of the 200 speakers, I saw two patterns emerge. While others didn’t share my specific concern, many others shared similar concerns about the failure to pay proper attention to communities of interest and respect for city and county lines. Calls for competitive districts included lively chat discussion whether this need was on equal footing with the other requirements. Language of Prop 106 answers that question. Of the six requirements, the only unqualified one is adherence to the Constitution and the Voting Rights Act. The other five requirements have a qualifier to the extent practicable. Only Section F, the additional qualifier on competitiveness, says to do so would create no significant detriment to the other goals. That is the only objective that has that additional qualifier. So while some see competitiveness as desirable, it cannot be used to split towns, counties, and other communities and create far-flung gary-mander districts. This is not what voters authorize this commission to do. Every time you hear the word “competitive,” you need to attach secondary or subservient to it. Over half of Penale County is outside of city limits, and county government is there to meet needs that most people get from cities. Penale County doesn’t need to be split into four legislative and three congressional districts. I’d like to see Apache Junction kept intact, and along with neighboring Gold Canyon, be placed in Penale-focused districts. We can be flexible in how this is done, but putting us in legislative districts spanning 200 miles and congressional districts with points 400 miles away is not what voters gave you the authority to do. Thank you.
Folks. My name is Jerry Walker, and I’m a resident of Apache Junction, Arizona. Prior to that, I lived in Gold Canyon, Arizona, and before that, I lived in Mesa, Arizona. I’ve been in Arizona 22-plus years now, and before that, I had 28 and a half years in the United States Navy as a combat medic for the Marine Corps most of the time. I’m currently a member of the Central Arizona College Board, and before that, I was a member of the Maricopa College Board. I’m interested in education. I’m interested in communities of interest. And I don’t know if any of you have ever attended an LD 16 meeting. LD 16 is considered Maricopa County and Penale District 5 is completely segregated for them. If you want to destroy a community of interest, you’ve done a real good job of it, because we are, in CD, in District, Penale District 5 are completely separated from the Maricopa folks. They have nothing to do with us, and they have a completely different mindset, orientation. Most of us who live in Apache Junction and Gold Canyon moved there to avoid the kind of configuration that occurs in Maricopa County, and we’re not being allowed to be who we are by being in the districts the way you’ve got them divided. I would truly appreciate your sole-sought consideration and looking at a better way of doing things than this is currently configured. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Arthur Borin, and I live in Eloy. We shop there. My family shops there, my wife and I. Our doctors are there. Just about everything we do, we do in Casa Grande. We live in a contiguous community right now. It’s Casa Grande, it’s Eloy, and it’s Arizona City. Excuse me. We have no lectern here. Our community right now is contiguous, compact, and we have common interests. I’m talking about the communities of Casa Grande, Eloy, and Arizona City. We border each other. You could take a triangle and put a point on each one of those communities. Arizona City borders Eloy. It borders Casa Grande. Eloy borders Casa Grande and Arizona City. And the same with Casa Grande. It borders Eloy and it borders Arizona City. Okay? You could probably take a radius in the center of those things, that’s about 20 miles, and incorporate most of those three little communities. When I took a look at your map here, I’m saying, gee, why did you take us and rip us away from Casa Grande? The nearest other communities are the Tucson area, which is about 120 miles to the southeast. And the other community is Yuma, which is about 160 miles to the west. And in between all of those is the Tonto-odum Nation. We have nothing in common with those communities. No ill intent. We have nothing in common with those communities, no ill intent, and they're all so far away. Thank you.
My name is Phyllis Pettijohn. I reside in an active adult community within Pinellas County, area code 85623. Like many Americans, we routinely function fairly close to home. Our community of interest lies on a 16-mile north-south stretch of Highway 77 between Oracle and Oral Valley, Arizona, and northwest to Florence and Eloy, Arizona. All our goods and services are in these four areas, which include cultural, educational, religious, as well as social venues. We prefer to have our community of interest remain whole without being sliced up when drawing these district maps. We have absolutely no interest to be lumped in with part of Tucson. Had we wanted to be part of Tucson or Pima County, we would have purchased a home there. We are very happy, however, with Legislative District 17 as it is in version 10.0. Thank you for that. It includes Oracle, Oral Valley, Morana, and Tanque Verde. However, the map for Congressional District 6 has included a portion of Tucson, which we do not want at all. Instead, it should include Florence and Eloy, Arizona. As a relative newcomer to Arizona, only three years, I have learned sadly that the previous commission was too focused on competitiveness, resulting in nearly half of our residents being underrepresented. When drawing these maps, I respectfully ask each of the commissioners to adhere to the six criteria laid out by the Arizona Constitution. Thank you for allowing me to share my concerns.
My name is Patricia Peterson. I live and work in Casa Grande, Noll County. I have lived in Casa Grande since 1988. I think the concerns here are, I agree with the Eloy, Casa Grande, and Arizona City issue, but the dividing of that, that that's not right. And I think I would ask you to please follow the Constitution, and that is the way to resolve a lot of these concerns. So please, follow the Constitution.
My name is David Pelengis. I'm a retired naval officer, actually taller. I live in Oracle, Arizona, in a community called Saddle Brook Ranch. I'd like to start out with some good news because all I've heard is, with rare exception, is complaints. We strongly favor Legislative District Number 17 map, 10.0. That's from many residents I've talked to in Saddle Brook Ranch. Congressually, and I'm giving you the executive summary here, we recommend the city of Tucson, as Ms. Pettijohn just said, be removed from District 6 in terms of representation. We don't do Tucson. That's why we're out where we are. We'd suggest that you consider the city of Florence and Eloy be included in District 6 in terms of the congressional district. We were rural, we're now urban, we don't want to be urban, it's not why we moved here. So please, I ask for your consideration. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Norwalk. I reside in Santan Valley and Queen Creek. Those are basically my communities of interest, where we shop and go to the doctor and have our car fixed and everything else. I'm going to speak particularly to LD-15. That area will currently, under your maps, will have an area of approximately 80 miles east and west, and 130 miles north and south. And it also includes a small area of Maricopa County at the north end. This portion, as it is in Maricopa County, would make more sense to go to LD-10 or 14 because of communities of interest. A more logical approach, in my opinion, would be to move the area west of Meridian and north of US 60 to either District 10 or 14. Expecting a representative to address issues in Maricopa County while most of us have a focus in Pinellas County would be very illogical. I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hope you'll consider my views. Thank you.
That concludes with our speakers in Florence. Back to Phoenix.
Thank you. The remaining 26 speakers are here in Phoenix, and so I will call you up five at a time, and if someone should come back to Florence, then we will break at some point to go back to them. So the next five speakers are, first person is Lisa White, second is Bruce Lindquist, third is Deanna Schreckler, the fourth is Janet Bowman, and the fifth is Mary Wheeler.
Lisa White. Lisa White, Yanashia, Torachi, Nidala, Tapah, Basish, Chin. I always actually make sure that I introduce myself properly as a Native American. My name is Lisa White. I live in the South Phoenix, representing in a Native community as well. We need more representation for our communities who are struggling. It's representations for our communities who are struggling. It's hard for those who are, it's hard for those who are struggling to make the right decision when we are not respected or understood. We lack many resources to help our low-income communities become successful. And when that happens, unfortunately, many make the wrong decision and end up incarcerated. And there is almost no help when it comes to supporting the incarcerated community. For once, I would like to see candidates who are serious about giving us the tools to succeed and also to get serious about the mass incarceration issue that too many politicians choose to ignore. These people are still humans and deserve a chance to succeed after doing their time because Arizona doesn't believe in second chances. I also am asking for the fifth majority-minority district because we still do not have enough representation and not enough people in government trying to give us the right tools. Thank you.
My name is Bruce Lindquist. I'm an architect and a planner. I've been involved in Arizona since 1956. Got drafted in the Marine Corps in 1969, came back, worked very hard shortly after that and became an architect. And as a planning director of our firm, I overlooked the relocation of the Hughes Helicopter facility in Mesa, Arizona. I'm redoing all of this because I'm going to get some points that are important here. When we started working with Hughes Helicopter, they were very interested in having one identity to work with. They had five sites, four sites owned by Suma Corporation, and one was in Mesa, Arizona, at Falcon Field. I remember distinctly that they didn't want to have to deal with a whole lot of other issues if they only had one city. I'm leading to this because it's very important that you combine the cities, look at the school districts, the people that live in Arizona that are residents, the first district they know is school district, second district they know is where they live in a community, whether it's a county or a city, because they see that on their tax bill. And it's very important that the cities and the communities stay together. I'm in LD-27, soon to be LD-11. I want to lodge a complaint that we're losing three casinos, two Indian tribes, and the state capitol. That's my only complaint. Other than that, I think we will remain pretty much intact in South Phoenix and Levine. Also, be careful, we are the fastest-growing community, Maricopa County, in the United States and have been for the last 25 years. Levine, I believe, is the fastest-growing area in the state right now. Thank you. Good luck.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and IRC members. My name is Deanna Schreckler, and I have lived in Awatuki for 17 years, currently in LD-18. After reviewing the maps, I have just a few suggestions that I would like to share today. Our current LD-18 has some urban parts of Chandler in it and would like to unite downtown Chandler as well. Major businesses along the Price Corridor and employees would also be together. Also, please continue to keep Awatuki together, and it has common communities of interest. It would be good to include urban areas of Tempe and Chandler. This would include the area of shopping around the Chandler Mall, which most of us do quite often. Also, as being an educator, I would also like, I think it is important to keep the Tempe Union High School district together as well. The schools have been an integral part of our community for decades, and our students have had fun, school rivalries, competition as well. Thank you for your commitment and long hours of serving the great state of Arizona.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Janet Bowman, and I have lived in Awatuki for over 32 years. I was looking at the proposed map for my area, which would be District 12, and I feel that there should be some things to consider on your redistricting. Awatuki may be part of Phoenix, but Awatuki residents, we have our own community of interest. We are an urban, not a rural, community, and we attend churches and shop along the Chandler corridor, which includes the Chandler Mall. Also, another consideration which was just brought up is the Tempe High School district, which should be kept together, which makes sense. We are a cohesive and distinct community, and it follows logic that the 60 should be a natural boundary line. I want to thank you for hearing everyone's concern, especially the concerns of gerrymandering. And we must remember that all elected officials and all public servants, so everyone, and trying to do lines based on racial demographics arguments are just therefore mute because everyone represents, you represent all of us. And remember that the IRC must adhere to all six criteria as laid out in the Arizona Constitution. You have a tough task, and I appreciate all the hours that you're doing and all the hours that you have yet to do. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Hello, my name is Mary Wheeler-McFarland. I'm currently a member of Legislative District 18, and I'm addressing the Arizona draft map for Legislative District 12. I think you've had a lot of eloquent speakers here. I'm new to the Awatuki area. I've only been here about three and a half years. However, I have a son who serves with distinction as a captain in the Army, military intelligence. He was at Fort Howard Tucci for a while, and I believe that the map as proposed with the panhandle, I'm going to address that area, it does a disservice to Gilbert by dividing it into five legislative districts. I don't think those citizens can be adequately represented that way. The schools are broken up, the businesses are broken up, the communities broken up. We don't have a commonality of interest with that area. I believe that some of the proposals that have previously been made, changing Guadalupe to 60, putting in a certain business corridor, things of that nature, would make the map cleaner and would represent our interests better. And so I'm also asking that we have more hearings on this matter. Thank you for your time, and I yield back my time to another speaker.
Thank you very much. We have another five speakers. I'll call them in order. Number one is Roberta Miller. The second one, and forgive me if I get your name incorrectly, it looks like Nora Yarahim. The next person is Janash Abbas. Then the fourth person is Andrew Adams, and then the fifth person is Henry Manalo.
Good morning, Madam Chair and, oh, sorry about that. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commission members. My name is Roberta Neal Miller, which is probably why our, the person, I'm sorry, why she got my name wrong. I go by Roberta or by Neal. And I'd like to first really thank you for your service on this commission. This cannot be an easy job, balancing all of these competing interests. What you're performing is a civic duty, and again, we really appreciate that. I have a huge interest in the city of Tempe. I went to ASU, undergrad, graduate school, college of law. I practiced law for most of my career in the East Valley, beginning as a prosecuting attorney with the Maricopa County Attorney's Office prosecuting violent crime, and more recently in civil private practice in the city of Tempe. I'm the chair of my neighborhood association. I've lived in the same house for the last 28 years, built in 1967. I live about one mile south of ASU, so I am in legislative, current Legislative District 26, and I am part of that community of interest of ASU and the surrounding neighborhoods. Let me tell you, first of all, that I really appreciate the fact that you have kept together the North Tempe, ASU, surrounding neighborhood, community of interest. I think that is very appropriate. We definitely constitute a community of interest, and having lived there for 28 years and being the chair of a neighborhood association for the last 10 years and practicing law there, I think that's something that I can tell you with a fair amount of authority. What I do not like, respectfully, is the fact that you have carved Tempe up into four separate legislative districts. Now, I understand that the Constitution or Proposition 106 as incorporated in the Constitution talks about observing and respecting city boundaries to the extent practicable. I'm sorry, my time is up. I talk too much. Thanks very much.
Hi, I'm new to this, but my name's Nora, and I'm a high school student from Hamilton High School in Chandler. Having changed schools from Metro Tech to Hamilton, Metro Tech is located in Phoenix, I believe, South Phoenix, I noticed that there was a big difference when it came to equal opportunity. For example, I noticed that Metro Tech lacks many of the resources and programs that higher-income communities get, like Hamilton, since it's surrounded by those of higher income. And I would like to see candidates do a better job of fixing the school systems in Phoenix by giving the students the same opportunities and programs I now get to take advantage of. And I think that one way to do so is by making sure that we draw these districts in a fair competitive way that forces parties on both sides to fight harder for our families' votes and not forget about lower-income communities that still matter and desperately need equal opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for this great opportunity to be sharing for the redistricting in Arizona. And my name is Joahir Abbas. And my name is Johair Abbas and I am representing the refugee community in Chandler District 13. First, I like how the Asian community and Latino community design there. And I support more comparative district because currently I don't feel that anyone is forgetting from our vote. And we feel that small business and refugee community are neglecting and not getting any support, any strong support like other large corporations do. And we need more comparative district where candidates will ask my community what we need because we believing in American dream and successful life. And right now, we feel lost and forgetting. That is why I want to see more comparative district. So candidates and representatives will ask everyone what we need and not just some people. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Andrew Adams. I'm a homeowner in Gilbert and a small business owner and I am currently in what is now Legislative District 12. I just have a couple of concerns about the new Legislative District 12 as drawn. A lot of people have brought up the panhandle. I'm going to bring it up again. In my current Legislative District, I'm able to get to everyone or everyone's location within about 30 minutes. With the new proposals, I'm seeing times of about 30 to 40% more travel time to reach other ends of the district. I would also like to see Gilbert not split up into more than two districts. I've heard that from other people. I don't think it's very fair that Mesa, which is a much larger city, is broken up into less districts while Gilbert is broken up into five. So I conducted a poll of people in the local area to try to figure out what, where people went for work and where they commuted. If you look at the panhandle that brings Legislative District 12 towards the 10, out of the about 100 people that I talked to, only about two to three of those people commuted in that direction or had business in that direction on a weekly basis. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention. I heard someone from Awatuki bring up the point that we don't share communities of interest. Well, I'm the other side. I agree. So thank you for your time and it's a public service that you're providing and I do really appreciate everybody's time and thoughtfulness on these issues. Thank you.
Adams question.
Sure.
So they commute north-south?
What I found most is, as you see Legislative District 12 as drawn now, most of the people either come from Santan Valley or Queen Creek, either go north, like you said, and if they're going to go towards Phoenix, they'll go north and then, and then take the 60 and go that route. I didn't really find anybody that went, that took the 202 all the way out that way. So I just didn't think, and owning a business too, I have business in all, you know, what is Legislative District 12 now, but really nothing out that way. And didn't find anyone that had that as well, so appreciate that.
Hi, my name is Senator Montalvo. I've been looking and reviewing the potential districts as of the moment. I do believe that when you place District 9 in really closing, into encroaching into the actual city, I don't, they actually represent the full capacity of that district as being rural and set as more as urban. And it also misrepresents us as, you know, as an urban city. When you sit down and you look as far as the Buckeye, a lot of, a lot of communities out there are set semi-rural, but also as well as semi-urban, a lot aligned through, you know, the ITAN is coming in. As well as when you look at the condensal, at the LD, I believe, LD District 11 as coming in, that's all kind of weird in the percents. That can be a fifth Latino district. And it can be, it can help a lot, a lot of people. You know, I live in District currently, what's representative as of the draft is District 11. We have a hard, we, we don't have a lot of resources and as I've seen so far, all the Thomas and Indian School, it's literally, we still consider it South Phoenix. The only reason why is because a lot of, a lot of small Latino communities in that district, okay, still propagate, move, go to work in, in all that little district area. So that would be best represented. Thank you.
Thank you. I will call the next 10 speakers. The first is Steve Black. Second will be Lorraine Pellegrino. Third will be Aiden Young. Fourth will be Tomicha Brown. Fifth will be Al Cole. Al Cole. Sixth will be Diane Hirsch. Seventh will be Tega Maideau. Eighth will be Luis Huber. Ninth will be Jeffrey Tucker. And then Tamara Miller will be the 10th speaker.
Thank you for inviting me, Chair and everybody, Council. Name is Steve Black. I live in Maricopa County. I'm here today to give you information about my interests. I'm near 48th Street and north of Ray Road, now Awatuki area. Longtime native, I've learned in Phoenix. Born in St. Joe's Hospital. I'm in North Phoenix. I've lived in Peoria. I've lived in Mesa. I've lived in Tempe area and I live now in Awatuki. Very familiar, long time, with a lot of community in Arizona, as well as, I've built over 150 commercial building projects. I have a background in construction and technology. I am very familiar with most of all the communities in Arizona and as well as the Awatuki area. My biggest concerns is this, and one of the most important is that my community is basically made up of families, middle-class homeowners, college professionals, small business, retail, commercial, and longtime native residents of Phoenix. Some are homeowners that are retired along with many professionals that live in our community and work around the Chandler-Tempe as well as Phoenix area. The whole areas and people in terms that live there, a lot of them commute back and forth between schools, jobs, the chambers that are part of them, all mapped as kind of one. And I'm talking about the Arizona Awatuki, the West Chandler areas, the North Chandler areas, the South Tempe areas. The leg that, which represents from 101 east in that area towards Mesa, really doesn't have any part of those kind of communities. I don't think they should be included in that from a congressional standpoint nor from the standpoint of legislative as far as 12 is concerned. I should not be into the cities of Gilbert. So I should take on downtown Chandler because it's similar to community interests and a lot of people do a lot of shopping in Phoenix, back and forth on those areas. There's going to be more growth happening in terms of the future there that I think those are more stable communities than what they are now. Interests should be allowed in the districts. Thank you for my time.
Good morning. My name is Lorraine Pellegrino. I've been a resident of Awatuki for 26 years. My husband and I are very active citizens in our community. My remarks today concern the proposed LD 12. Our immediate neighbors in Awatuki strive to be a close-knit community within our district. We organize block parties, support local charities, and the annual Awatuki Festival of Lights. Although we're a part of Phoenix, the residents of Awatuki and the few miles surrounding us have enjoyed a reputation of having a neighborhood feel. People stay connected through social media and our hometown paper, the Awatuki Foothills News. Our children primarily attend the Kyrene and Tempe Union School districts. Awatuki must stay together and would be well-suited to include urban areas of Tempe and Chandler only. This would keep our school districts the same and include the area of Chandler Mall, where most people from Awatuki shop. For decades, residents have considered the national, the natural southern boundary of our community to be Pecos Road or what is now the 202. Not surprisingly, I am against the current 10.0 map, which has our district boundaries extending to Gilbert, which is split into five legislative districts. The community is spread out more than 20 miles end to end. I'm convinced that over-expansion would interfere with the common interests of our residents. It is impossible under the current configuration to create and maintain the community of interest which is so desired. Please consider taking the long east finger out to condense our district. One of the most important criteria that the commission is required to adhere to is a creation of a district that accurately represents communities of interest who live and work together. Thank you for your time and for volunteering.
Hi, my name is Aiden Young and the town of Gilbert has been my home for more than 24 years. I'd like to speak about the boundaries you've established for legislative districts that include parts of Gilbert. And as you may have heard, pieces of Gilbert have been broken up into five separate legislative districts. My own home has been assigned to District 12, which generally covers east and north Mesa. When I think of Gilbert, I think of the Riparian Preserve, the library, my children's schools, Ashes, Home Depot, Sam's Club, Joe's Real Barbecue, and the Gilbert Water Tower. Think about my church and my friends. None of these are in the district to which my home has been assigned. The icon of Gilbert is the water tower. I have no idea what Mesa residents consider iconic. You've assigned our water tower to a district covering Awatuki, District 12. Other parts of what I would consider the greater Gilbert downtown area are in Districts 9, 10, and 13. Makes no sense and is inconsistent with your high priority requirement to consider communities of interest. You have a section on your website aggregating data received from the public on communities of interest. For Gilbert, there's a high, rated high level of community association that generally extends to the US 60 on the north. Respectfully suggest that you extend District 14 to that line or at least to baseline road, which is Gilbert's town boundary. My family and I belong in District 14. For congressional districts, the southeast corner of District 4, which includes North Chandler and Gilbert, combines those areas with Awatuki and Tempe. It makes much more sense to include that area with their communities, communities of interest in District 5, which includes the areas to the south and west. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tamika Brown. I live at Indian School in 34, 33rd Avenue right now. I have had to move around a lot due to our housing and rent crisis, however, so I don't identify with one area of Phoenix. I do think though that we need five majority Latino state districts in Maricopa County without dividing our communities so that we can have better representation. It is important to me that we are able to elect folks that know what we are going through because the housing crisis has become a lot worse since the pandemic and also overlooked. And we need our voice heard. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of IRC. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Akol Akol, South Sudanese American. I'm representing, representing the refugees community in South Phoenix and Levine. Because I living in District 11 since 2006 and 19 years old in Arizona. I want to stress that we need someone who will understand the struggle that comes with reliving to new country and that we need more refugees resources center that can help us with learning and understanding English, understanding the difference culture here. And also ways to be able to help ourselves become more successful and self-sufficiency. We cannot do that if no one reaches out or makes an honest effort. I want to ask that there be another majority-minority district so that we can give the refugees community in South Phoenix proper representation and our hard worker people better opportunities. Also, we have a lot of elders who need help, hard worker and lost boy and English. Thank you.
Our next speaker was Diane Hirsch. Is Diane still here? Thank you. Then it will be Tega Maideau.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tega Maideau. I'm a resident of Tempe in the Rotary Park precinct. So my comments are going to be about the LDs, particularly in the East Valley. I believe Tempe should be divided into two districts only, D8 and D12. And the border should be around baseline, around baseline and southern, around the Rotary Park precincts and the Hollis precincts. I believe that would be a more of an appropriate border. I also believe that the paths of D4 that are east of Scottsdale Road should be moved into D8. I also support the Salt River Reservation being part of D9 because of the, the common interest in, in regards to school districts. In regards to D12, I'm thankful for how you put all of the Kyrene School District in that district, but changes that can, should definitely be made should be to remove the panhandle. And I support the city of Sun Lakes, Friendship Village in Tempe, and the Okothio Neighbors of Chandler being put into D12 because they are communities of interest with the Awatuki area in terms of retirement communities. Next, I would say, I would suggest that Gilbert also only be split into two districts, but the northwest Gilbert district be ordered into D13 as, as it currently is in the current, the old LD 17. And finally, I also support the addition of a extra majority Latino state in Maricopa County. I believe that's the right thing to do based on Latino growth and that'll be all. Thank you.
The next speaker was Luis Huber. Is Luis here? Then we will follow with Jeffrey Tucker.
Hi there and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jeffrey Tucker. I am also a resident of Tempe and I actually kind of echoed the last speaker's comments, so I'm going to cede my time and get us out of here a little bit sooner. He really stated everything very accurately in terms of what I feel. My big argument is really keep our cities together. Keep us together and try not to split us up as much. Thank you so much and thank you for all the work you do.
Hello, my name is Tamara Miller and my comments can be found online as well. I wrote them out. Thank you for your time and dedication to the task of redistricting and for your reception to our community comments. I'm a retired public school teacher and have lived in South Tempe in close proximity to Chandler for over 30 years. I feel compelled to speak up regarding the good things and concerns I have about the approved LD draft map. I have three asks. I feel that the aim should be to keep like communities more together within one district and reflect the shared interest of the communities. like communities more together within one district and reflect the shared interest of the communities. For example, it appears that the approved LD draft map does a great job of keeping the Kyrene School District whole within a single LD, LD 12, so thank you for that. If you must divide Tempe, please consider dividing it not into four districts. That just seems overdone, and perhaps you could divide it more into two districts using Southern Avenue as a dividing line between the northern part and the southern part. And next, I ask that perhaps you can keep the Latino population and community in Chandler together. The proposed new LD map divides the Latino community, which has more shared interests into halves between two districts, LD 12 and 13. To this end, please consider extending the new LD 13 northward, and please consider removing the extending arm, otherwise known as the finger, otherwise known as the panhandle, along the 101 that was created in LD 12 that stretches east to Valvista Drive, cutting through the cities of Chandler and Gilbert. So in conclusion, thank you for allowing comments.
We have nine remaining speakers for today, and I'll call you in order. The first is Ray Michaels, followed by the second, Thomas Sinassen. The third speaker is Avla Elniel. Fourth speaker is Miki Nilan. Fifth speaker is Rhonda Smith. The sixth speaker is Victoria Grihalva Ochoa. The seventh speaker is Luis Falcone. The eighth speaker is Tony Halaf. And then the final ninth speaker is Rosa Arrellano.
Hello, good morning. My name is Ray Michaels, and I am a native here in Phoenix. I'd like to thank you all for your service as well, for the volunteering, and I'd like to thank everybody here also who is very, very passionate about these legislative districts and congressional districts that have come up. I actually came here this morning simply to listen, to listen to what everybody had, and I can encourage everyone here that we would really like you to listen, because that's what's so important. Everything that is being decided in these districts affect everybody on an intimate and personal manner. And it's so very important for your ears to be open. And we know that you've worked very hard to put these together, but there's still a lot of issues that need to be addressed. And hopefully with the notes that you're taking and the recording that is being made here and down in Florence as well, is that everybody can really take that to heart and prayerfully consider what everybody here has invested their time and their effort to come in and to tell you. They're not wasting their time. This is something that is very, very important to them, and they hope that it becomes very, very important to you as well. And as servants of the public, we acknowledge and we appreciate what you're doing here, but we also know that you live up to a higher standard. And what everybody here today is asking for is for you to listen and to know that this is very, very important to them. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your great efforts. You know, it's so hard to spend basically the whole year working on this, so I appreciate it. My name is Thomas Simacek. I live in Awatuki, which is a part of Phoenix, separated actually from Phoenix by the South Mountains. To get here, I had to draw from Chandler and Tempe. I really couldn't go too much through the Phoenix. I would like to have some comments. My biggest comment is I think we would like to keep the Awatuki community together, which actually is on this map. It is a very tight community residential. On the other hand, we are tied up with Chandler and South Tempe. Whenever you ask me where I live, I can't often say, you know, around Chandler. And as far as I like people in Gilbert, I see that they are split in five ways, and they are kind of far away from us. So it would be probably better to take that infamous panhandle away from us. And we would like to rather extend father into Chandler or even to Maricopa. Father's out. I guess that's about it. Thank you very much for your efforts. Respectfully, I'm so much.
Hello, my name is Ola, and I'm a resident of South Phoenix. I want to say that the refugee community does not have enough representation and that we're often forgotten about. We worry about things like our safety here and sometimes feel that no one makes an effort to help us. Many times, we have to just depend on ourselves to help each other. But it is time that we acknowledge as a community and that we get some public funding to help us succeed in this country. I'm also asking for another majority-minority district so that we can elect someone who will properly represent all of our refugee communities and understand that we need more resources like English classes in public schools, more community centers, and more access to job opportunities and higher education. By providing another majority-minority district, we will have a better chance of electing someone who will help us succeed. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate your service, Madam Chairman, and Commissioners and staff. My name is Miki Niland. I live in Gilbert, and I am encouraging you to also come to the East Valley to do a hearing. I'll help the lady make brownies. Our legislative district, the 10.0 map fractures Gilbert into, of course, five pieces. I served on the Parkinson Recreation Board for six years, and I know that we're too big to be in one. I understand that we will have to be split. But I would, we're a community of family and faith, and we deserve to stay together in a maximum of two. Our heritage district and our civic center, although they're only two miles apart, are in two separate legislative districts. They haven't even been kept in one. And I would encourage you to move Legislative District 13 up to the border of Baseline on the top and Legislative District 14 up to the boundary of the Gilbert boundary of Baseline Road. Just extend both of those up, and that way we'll cut out three of the districts that are the problem. It would be a very simple fix just to move that up that way. I also live in South Gilbert, and so I'm in the Bello Germain road that's been mentioned before. I shop, go to places in Gilbert and in Queen Creek. They're both part of my community of interest. So I do recommend following the county line on the eastern boundary and keeping Queen Creek part of one of these Gilbert boundaries. Regarding the congressional map, I encourage you to keep Mesa and Gilbert whole together to follow the county boundary on the east and to extend to Stapley possibly on the west, but to keep us together with Mesa. There's a large park in South Gilbert where we built it there. It's a regional park, and we do a lot of things there across from Queen Creek and the southern part of Chandler there. So we are definitely a community of interest. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you so much for all your work that you're doing with this redistricting process. I really greatly appreciate it. And good morning. My name is Rhonda Smith. I live in Awatuki and have been a resident there for 19 years. When looking and reviewing the proposed maps, it shows that our present legislative district, 18, has urban parts now Chandler that are split. I would like to see Chandler united. I propose that our area extend to the Price Corridor, east of Fry Road, and include the Chandler Hospital. This would provide our heroes, the hospital staff and other employees, to live close to their workplace. This would also include the Chandler Mall for dining, shopping, and entertainment. The Chandler Mall is the closest shopping mall and the only shopping mall in the area for us Awatuki residents and the many people of Awatuki who work there. I would also like to see on a second proposal is I'd like to see Gilbert united. Right now, the current map, 10.0, shows that our district extending to Gilbert, which is split into five legislative districts. I recommend that you condense our district and remove that each, that why I called it the East Branch, but people are referring to it as the panhandle. This makes, or the finger, I like that. This makes our district and Gilbert's district more compact. If Gilbert stays in five legislative districts, businesses, constituents, and school leaders will have to meet with 10 state representatives and five state senators instead of four state representatives and two state senators if the Gilbert split, or when it's split. It is not fair to separate Gilbert into so many districts. They need to be unified. Thank you for your time and your efforts.
I'm quite a bit shorter. Hi, my name is Victoria Grihalva. I am a lifelong Arizona and fully expect to stay in my home state forever, which is why it's so important for me to participate here. I've spoken on behalf of an organization before, but speaking before you today as an individual. I also want to start by noting appreciation for the commission for actually hosting a hearing here in South Phoenix. After a lot of community input, having a hearing that is just five minutes from my home is incredibly helpful and ensures that we're actually able to be here. Speaking directly on the draft maps, I want to speak about Congressional District 3. The current configuration of the district includes racially polarized voting areas and at the same time removes some of the Latino areas that the commission had originally included in earlier mapping sessions. That particular configuration adds Peoria, which doesn't really have a lot in common with the rest of the district, and it's not a predominantly Latino city. On the topic of predominantly Latino areas, it's incredibly important that the maps that the commission finalizes include eight Latino ability-to-elect districts. The fifth one, as many have mentioned here, is likely going to be in Maricopa County. People of color have led population growth here in this state and in particular here in Maricopa County. And there's no reason that the Latino community, that's a constituency protected by the VRA, shouldn't have an additional ability to elect district. And then while fair representation is incredibly important, that doesn't mean that the commission shouldn't also ensure a greater number of competitive districts. Having 24 safe districts is too many safe districts. Our communities are much better served when candidates are basically forced to engage with our communities and talk to our communities instead of expecting an assured elected office. That's all I have for you today. Thank you all so much.
I have a follow-up question. Thank you so much for coming. We've heard quite a bit about the number of majority-minority districts for the Latino community. What we haven't heard, what I would like to learn more about is in the draft maps that we have available today, just as a reference point, are there school districts that are in important heavily Latino areas that are not being empowered? You know, the data showing that the Latino youth in particular has struggled with the, you know, effects of the pandemic. So barring the number of districts, are there, you know, ways to build, you know, from what we have to empower the school districts? And second to that, we heard also again, barring the number of districts, empowering, burgeoning Latino and/or Asian minority communities such in that Chandler area. Are there improvements that we can make, you know, that's not just the number? So we'd like that specific information. You don't have to answer now, but in our ongoing dialogue over the ensuing weeks, I'd love that information.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks so much.
Hi, Luis Falcone. Currently live in Maryvale and work in Avondale. Thank you for hosting the meeting here in South Phoenix. Grew up in South Phoenix, but would definitely love to see a meeting in Maryvale, which, as you guys know, is a predominantly largely Latino community and
Just so you know, we will be in Maryvale in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. To your follow-up question, that is an area that has been largely hit by the pandemic. As somebody who currently lives in Maryvale, that area has a school district, you have cart ride, you have also Head Start programs such as the West Side Head Start Program that I work with and am part of their policy council and are currently struggling with getting parents to even get their students enrolled. So that is something that would definitely be helpful to see. But as far as the draft maps, my concern is with Congressional District 7. I would definitely like you guys to revisit that congressional district. I'm not sure why the congressional district just cuts off. Looks like just in the middle of the desert. Currently, the district does reach into the West Valley up into Avondale-Tollison as well as the Goodyear area. Currently, there are some draft maps that have been proposed that... Well, thank you. My time is up.
And is Tony Halaf? You will pass? Thank you. Then Rosa?
Muy buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Rosa Arrellano.
My name is Rosa Arrellano.
Yo vivo en el área de 7 calle y baseline.
And I live in the area of 7th Street and Baseline.
En unos apartamentos para personas de tercera edad e incapacitados.
In a set of apartments that host or where the community there is the elderly and disabled.
Yo siento que personas de la tercera edad como yo hemos sido totalmente abandonados.
I feel that the elderly, such as myself, have been abandoned or forgotten.
En el estado de negligencia puesto que estos apartamentos necesitan mucha atención.
And at this point, I feel like it's negligence because these apartments need attention.
Para eso siento que necesitamos más distritos de minorías de mayorías estatales en el condado de Maricopa.
And this way I feel that we are in the need of more or smaller smaller districts in the bigger districts of minority, in the Maricopa County.
Porque la población latina ha crecido dramáticamente.
Because the Latin population has grown dramatically.
Así que necesitamos más distritos que tengan una representación más precisa en la comunidad latina.
So we need more districts to have a more precise Latin presence.
So gracias.
That's all. Thank you. And we had two more late submissions, so the next speaker will be Jamra Scott, followed by Irma Pacheco.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Jana Scott. I'm representing the African-American Christian Clergy Coalition today. We did submit written comments, but just wanted to stand here with the people today. Although we have churches across Maricopa County with affiliates in Tucson and Flagstaff, our biggest concern is that you maintain competitiveness as you draw these districts. You know, in our faith tradition, one of our leading passages of scripture talks about what the Lord requires of you. And I know as you are people who've come to public service and want to do the right thing, I would just leave you with that, that you do justice, that you love mercy and walk humbly before your God. Justice is the key here because this is an issue of justice. The way you write the